Victoria.
Yeah.
We do.
Boss back. We're gonna do the weather?
Second? Oh, I didn't catch that. Yeah, I didn't. I thought you did.
Yes ma'am.
But.
It's fine too.
Okay. Okay. Not a problem. Alright, thanks. No answer. Whenever you're ready ma'am.
Alright, everybody ready? Let's do this thing. Right, I called the workshop to order at 1:07 PM. I didn't print the agenda, so I'm waiting there.
The first item would be budget workshop, general fund expenditure.
We're gonna go for budget workshop, general fund expenditures. That's my only thing on the agenda. See? That's why I didn't print it. Okay, so. Let's take a look at the compensation summary by fund individual sheet. Excuse me. Cause this is a leftover from the budget workshop the other night. So, it looks like we have 1.5 cola included in the draft of the budget. Which looks like total compensation is on the far right-hand side, 4,928,000. And change. Um, y'all excuse me, lunch is in my throat and I'm just gonna have to clear my throat. At the 3% cola plus step, it's bumped up to 5,000, 5 million, 2,000, 2,470 dollars. And then the 3, the nominal 5% is bumped up to 5,78,183. Council members.
So if you look, if you look at the bottom, I broke out the, the actual increases. So, kinda give you a better perspective than just the large numbers on the site.
So for example, the 1.5% cola right now would result in an increase in salaries to 254,000 dollars above this year's budget. A 3% would be 73,000 more than that. And a 5% would be 149,000 more than that.
So what's the number up here, the 4,928, does that already?
That's total compensation.
Right, but does that already have the 1.5 in it? Yes, okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought.
Which is 254,762 dollars more than a total compensation for fiscal year 2023.
Twenty, twenty-four, we're working on twenty-five.
Correct.
That October thing throws. Okay, council members.
And you're saying there's about three people that have nuts, there's actually five.
There's five. But there's five, we're exactly confirmed.
Now, those people usually, I just assume they've been here for a while and they're maxing out. But they're getting close to retirement, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any way to add additional matches to the TMRX?
Not individually, what you do for one, you gotta do for all when it comes to TMRX benefits. So we couldn't treat some employees with a higher TMRX contribution without treating the, all the employees the same.
That'd be a little bit of a code. That's good, thinking outside the box then.
I mean, the only, the only other option would be to completely amend the pay scale and add additional steps. But again, how far do we go? 10 is just generally the average, that's typical for other cities. I have seen on rare occasions, you can do 15-step increases, but again, I, I just worry that that sets us up for not promoting people to want to take on additional responsibility and promote. Um, that's the, again, that's the purpose behind a pay scale, is eventually if you don't take on additional responsibility or promote, you're gonna cap at the position you're in. And if you want to make more money, then take on additional responsibility and promote, do what you can.
Same.
Yeah. Uh, I'll put this out there, just to, that ad related to what, uh, person. I was actually seeing, especially at least in Fire World, reduction in steps, two, three, four years. You're top out encouraging those to promote or to find, you know, uh, bigger, better within the city.
Okay, so what's your dream? What, you're talking, anybody, oh. Well, like I said, I, to me, those are kept out, I think they deserve, I don't know, 1.5. That's just, yeah, that's a joke.
We're gonna talk about what employees deserve, they deserve a lot more than a five.
Well, I know.
But it's, it's. No, 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 I know, but I'm saying they, they deserve, I mean, a lot more than what we can offer. Um, I think, I think the concern from our side is, is management of what we got, what we can afford with the increase of revenue we're anticipating, which isn't that, that much. Um, and then, uh, also keeping in, keeping in mind that our general fund reserve balance has got to continue to be a top priority, building that butt back up. Because of our current bond rating, uh, here within the next, probably year, two years, three years, we're, we're planning to go back and have conversations with Sanco Capital about bond refinancing and potentially another bond, maybe rolling what's left over from the 2013 bond into a new bond package, so that we can address some of the, uh, infrastructure needs, streets we've talked about, buildings we've talked about. So, we just gotta keep all that in mind, our general fund balance plays a huge role in our.
And when you were looking at the property taxes, how many of the new homes are used?
Sure, so, yeah, let me explain.
Cause not all, not all of the new homes are included in this year's, like, we were getting all excited, we're gonna start seeing more, but not all of them met the, they weren't finished, the houses weren't complete by.
Yeah, so we had, I had questions about the TAD.
Right, so that just clearly just cut off.
Yeah, so TAD assessments are done solely in January, even on due construction. So if, for example, a property is under construction, not complete, its value will remain at what the land value is. So if that home is finished and complete in February, and now the property value may be 300,000 dollars, it's still assessed only at the land value of 14, 20, 40.
So basically, for a whole year, they're not gonna pay property taxes.
So we, yeah, we won't see that increase in revenue. So we're struggling to try to anticipate exactly what kind of increase we're going to see in this fiscal year. Because even if January 1 comes around, that, that's three quarters of the year, it's likely to be prorated, and if they've already paid their taxes upfront at the beginning of the year, I don't, I don't know how that's gonna work.
Yeah.
So, we're really kinda at the mercy of waiting for TAD to present tax rolls, so we can do truth of taxation to see what property taxes will look like. Um, we know that sales tax revenue is up, that's, that's helpful, but sales tax revenue is not, it's not, it's never been a huge revenue source for the city, it's never been a primary revenue source for the city, so.
Of course you can't count them.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's. Influx, it's absolutely, um, so, you know, there's, there's certainly a lot of positive trends. But this is a very weird budget this year, because we've got so much change, and we're struggling to anticipate what that change is without getting proper information, and we won't have that information until the last minute. I mean, it, I, I think our last budget.
I'm hoping for next Friday, but we'll see if we make it.
Well, go ahead, cause I'm gonna throw something out there, you're not gonna like. Well, I, uh, after looking at, um, kind of researched a little bit, you know, the average for Texas 2024 is 3.2%. I'm good with the 3%. So at least 3%.
These numbers presented is because this is what they're not gonna do.
No, 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 we don't, we want.
We haven't done revenue side yet. So this is, so whatever we agree to, all of, even all of the expenditures, it, this is just a proposal until we do the revenue side, and then we have, that's when we have to balance out. And that's when we have to start cutting things that like, you really want 40,000, you might think you get 10. Like, we have to start cutting where we have to, if it's not balanced.
What would a 2% be?
Uh, that, well, it's kinda hard to do that on a whim, but.
Yeah, I just was giving a couple of options, I mean, I.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Someplace.
I did one, but I was reading a lot, but.
I will, I mean, what, whatever the, what this is probably going to come down to, is because we have increased requests, we're talking about adding additional personnel, we're talking about addressing park concerns. Uh, there's a lot of capital request in here, we're increasing, uh, in a lot of areas, we're also increasing revenue in a lot of areas as far as charging for services, like through our dispatch month, uh, dispatch department, uh, communications, animal control, those things. So, all that stuff's gotta balance out. What this will likely come down to, and what we'll probably have to do is have another workshop where, after revenues, we come back through and determine what council priorities are, and choose what to reduce. I mean, we may have, we very well likely may have to come in here and make cuts. Uh, and so it's gonna boil down to what your priorities are, if the council would like for us to keep a budget of 3% cola, we can do that.
You know, I mean.
But when it comes to the revenue side, and we see what the revenues are, we may have to come back to the table and say, okay, what are your priorities and what are we going to cut?
So we have to cut this down or bring it down to 2%? Well, yes, um, I mean, at the end of the day, is 73,000 gonna bust the budget? Probably not, but other things will potentially have to get cut. So it's, you know, here and there.
But this, we're juggling balls in the air.
Yeah, so that, so when we meet back up and we actually have revenue numbers, then we can say, okay, what, what are your, y'all's priorities? Would it not be so?
To stay on the 1.5, and then when we come back from workshop, if we can actually increase, we increase then?
Sometimes it is harder to add in and to take away. I don't, I don't know what your thoughts there are.
Well, I mean, it's the same, I've already having calculations for all the ways. So, for me, it's just putting them in, but, um.
I'd, I'd like to propose the 3%, because that's a little healthier than 1.5. That will give the five that are not gonna get the step increase a little extra. Um, and at this point, there's nothing we're gonna be able to do with those five. They're tapped out, and they know they are, so they're not expecting a step increase.
One thing I didn't look at is how many of those, we know for a fact, one of those five is retiring.
That's correct, halfway through the year.
Are any of the others, I don't think so, any of the others?
No.
Okay.
So that's, I'd like to toss that out. What do y'all think about that?
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't.
Just so we're clear, so what that means is that for the majority of employees, that's a 6.5% increase, okay?
Yeah, yeah, because they get their 3, 4, 5.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And if we've got in mind what we need to pay our employees, and then we'll put the stuff in, what stuff that we need to do.
I will absolutely not argue with you. I am, I am very pro-employees, I certainly wanna get our salaries up, it's so much easier to attract and retain quality employees, uh, we get what's paid for, when we, when we talk about employees. So I won't argue with you there, um, I've never been hesitant about raises, I'm just more hesitant about, what do we, we have to figure out what we're gonna have to cut, I'm worried about at the end, like that.
Well, and we'll, once we hit the numbers, and we can see the big picture, then we'll have a better idea of what may or may not need to be cut, we may be pleasantly surprised. And, and we have been in the past, we've also been stunned, and we have to back up and start.
Well, just keeping in mind that it's still, you know, in y'all's interest for us to also reduce property tax, so that's also a goal, to continue that trend that we started with that, so.
It may be a smidgen, but we'll see about that, so, yeah. Yeah, okay, so if, if everybody's good with the 3%, then we can count this one down and move into our package. Is there anything that we skipped over before we move on?
Um, there was, so, one other task that you tasked me to do, uh, to address was code enforcement.
Yeah.
So just to address code enforcement, I, I met with our command staff, and what we are looking to do, we are trying to make some changes there. Uh, we are likely going to be implementing probably an incentive pay for police officers that are willing to go be certified as code enforcement officers, and adopt a standard for them to meet certain number of cases a month. Um, and try to, try to address code enforcement that way, by getting several people to attack it. Uh, that would result in an increase in training funds for police, which we'll talk about here in a little bit, uh, not that much, but I would have to sit in through the, through the code enforcement training to get them certified. But that is one option we are looking at, the other option we are looking at is potentially, uh, seeing what, what other contract firms charge that come in and do those kind of services as well, just so I'm presenting all the options out there to you. And then, uh, also talking with our.
Maybe a whole lot less than at another position with benefits and all the things.
Um, and then we're also talking with, uh, our neighboring cities that we've been partnering with on these kind of efforts to see if, hey, is this, is this an opportunity for regionalization, that are you weak in here in this area as well, could we partner together to see how we can be improved and reduce costs?
And look at that third-party things between the two or three cities?
Sure.
Not bad.
So we're, we're looking at several different options, I just wanted to let you know I didn't forget, it didn't slide away from me. Uh, that was what we talked about, uh, I think the police officers would enjoy that, cause it's another opportunity for them to, to make a few extra cents an hour. Uh, that's how instead of pay works, typically they're, get a certification of performing a task, as long as they're meeting that standard, they're making 29 to 57 cents more an hour for, for that duty, so. Um, it's, it's more budget friendly that way too, than adding a, a part-time position.
Yeah.
So.
And plus, they're out driving around here. Okay, thank you for that, I'm, I'm happy with that.
That's familiar, that, I'm, I have to say, please, so far for me, it's all in front of yours.
Yes, I believe her out of me. Yes, sir, I'll be right back with my first.
You want me to run this or you?
You can start, it's good.
Alright. So.
Alright, general fund expenditures.
Yes ma'am, we can go ahead and turn to page four.
Look at that, or first page three.
Good stuff.
It is.
It's good.
Oh, I see, it's on the back of page two, okay.
It's got three numbers.
Oh, well, okay.
It was the first, it was the number. Well, we'll start on page four, and then we'll go to page three.
Yeah. Page, unnumbered page three behind four.
So, page four is your overall summary, general fund expenditure summary by department, overall increase of 18.34%. You can see the fluctuations for each department, obviously, we're gonna talk about each department, so we can probably address any, any big percentages as we get to those departments instead of right here. Uh, and then down below is a breakout of the percentage, that department's percentage of usage of the general fund budget overall. So if you flip to the next page, Susan's.
Usage, this, this one here?
This.
Of the 25.
Of the 25, the proposed.
Okay, so each department, their percentage of the general fund budget.
If you flip to the next, yeah, if you flip to the next page, there's a great, um, um, pie chart there for you that uses those numbers, no, that's, that's the one, the visual that she put together for you.
Yeah, I have, I have to turn to the next one, it's, it's.
Oh, I got you, I got you. Ready?
Plan ahead.
So next we go to page five. We'll start with non-departmental. So non-departmental is pretty much things that affect almost all departments, we classify it as non-departmental, meaning it's not specific to any one department, it's usually inclusive of everything.
Things that are separated, that you divide out.
Covers all.
Sure, covers all.
Yeah.
So, equipment lease payment is covered under here, um, this is the, uh, lease payment for the cop here, there at City Hall. Uh, the biggest change here is the, uh, insurance of property liability, that's our TML insurance policy, previously that was paid for out of finance budget. Um, it covers, it covers all the insurance, including water, all police vehicles, fire vehicles, workman's comp, so it makes sense to move it to non-departmental, and now from underneath finance. Um, no other real big change, we are proposing a reduction in the building maintenance, we have a brand-new roof on City Hall, we have brand-new air conditioners at City Hall, we're not anticipating any major maintenance issues at City Hall. I said anticipating. Uh, but we are proposing, you know, I'm gonna jump a little bit, sorry, if you jump down to the bottom, we are proposing a $15,000 capital expenditure item here in this budget, and that would be for new carpet inside of City Hall. The carpet is, uh, ripping, tearing, fraying, um, and it's.
Asking the jerks. It's a lot, but even though it's carpet.
Yeah, we may not, we can look at all options, but new flooring, I guess I should say.
Right, yeah, not necessarily carpet, like this floor's nice too.
Good.
Some sort of new flooring inside City Hall is, is, is needed. That, that was explored, it's embarrassing. Um, okay, so going back up, uh, utility electric, we are seeing an increase, a spike in, in electricity cost, so that's kind of just out of our control. One thing, one effort we have made to try to reduce that is Public Works has installed smart thermostats in this building, City Hall and the Civic Center, um, to try to reduce electricity usage when the buildings are not occupied.
Excellent, and it's working, let me tell you, I'm sitting here late at night, about eight o'clock every night, and it's like, all of a sudden, I'm burning up, I'm like, man, it, it's taken several hours to just heat up, and then all of a sudden, I'm like, dying. Killing me.
That's all.
Yeah, we have to go home. We definitely are changing the temperature and not just leaving it on all day, so.
So we're hoping that, that helps combat the increasing electricity cost. What we do plan to do is, I'll run, we have, with our JEXA account, I can run usage summaries, I don't wanna run billing, because it's hard to compare billing at higher rates to last year.
Yeah.
We'll run utility, uh, those usage reports, show you the differences there, see if it helps combat. Yeah, it's fire station, police station, those are, those are almost impossible, I mean, there's, they're occupied 20%. I know, we gotta have it 60, 63.
Six, okay, we need to drop.
We store the cold, so that way when we go out and sweat, then we're, we're ready to go.
Okay.
This is an internal freezer until we're cut sweat.
That's why you're like onions.
Yeah, my blood sticker, really.
That's where I'm at.
Gas usage is down, this is primarily due to, uh, you know, with the new building renovations and stuff that we've had take place, we've done away with some of the gas water years, where most of them are tankless, now there's only a couple of those left, we're just not using that much gas, natural gas. Um, that's gone down significantly.
The other company's fine.
Yes. Um, telephone, internet cable, that's gone, that's gone up slightly, we've got some additional new cell phones for our employees, so that's an increase there, to 80,000. So, overall increase is 7, 6.71% increase, and that is, again, primarily due to the, the TML insurance being moved to this budget, that's a, that's a big chunk of it. Any questions? Alright. So let's move to administration, this is my budget. Let's see, going down, uh, we didn't, we haven't previously put money in here for awards or banquet, so I'm just putting 2,000 in there, that's for just recognition of employees, typically the things like the gala, uh, those are, those are paid for through donations, sponsorships. So this is just for the, the other items.
Yeah, that, actually, we reduced Mindy's budget, we used to hit Mindy's budget with a lot of the awards, and so, but he's typically the one that's ordering them, so we moved it to his budget, with 2,000.
Does that include the, uh, trophy-looking names like we gave to the over couple with the 70th?
That's the council.
That's, that's gonna be council's budget, we'll talk about that too.
Um, computer programming has, has gone up, um, we do have some unique costs this year, because we've got some issues with computers, and a lot of that is to our IT services. Um, this year, that's why you see it so high, but we do have some increased service cost, programming cost, um, that's primarily because, uh, Donna and permitting actually hits this budget. Um, and we've added the online portal for permitting on there, so we've seen some increased costs there, JotForm, um, a couple other, uh, uh, things are added in here, and then also, we're proposing to go with Mutico for the website this next year. So this $20,000 should more than cover all of the software expenses. Uh, and then with the new hardware that we've got, I, I don't think the new computers, after adding the part timers and the, those machines, I, there shouldn't be any, any other major expenses here, so 20,000 should do it. Um, to highlight, is a camera, have we talked about, did we talk about the website at a council meeting?
We did, you said that you were gonna create a, a committee.
Yes, okay, okay. I'll make sure it was.
Susan's committee.
Oh, she is absolutely gonna be on that committee.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Ever ball late. If I can't find it, it's not good.
Going down a page, I am, uh, asking to increase training, uh, travel schools and training a little bit, um, primarily because we've got a couple of additional, uh, staff members in there, Dawn, they have to do some training through Mutico and some others. Um, and then also, the city manager, uh, conference I'd like to go to this next year. No, I'm sorry, EDC conference, thank you.
Is that included in that 2,000?
Yes ma'am.
It's, it's local conference, so that should cost us.
Um, library services, uh, we know increase there. Going down, salaries, of course, jumping down to legal services, um, we've performed pretty good with our legal services budget this year, still wanna keep it somewhat healthy, just in case something was to come up, uh, something major, we've, we've got it built into the budget, so not proposing any change there, just keeping it at the 45,000. Um, I am asking for an increase in the contingency reserve, I do think it's important that we try to increase this annually. Uh, we started at 20,000, we increased it to 25 last year, asking to increase that to 30,000 this year. Again, that's just a reserve fund there, that if something catastrophic was to happen, we have some funding. Um, if for whatever reason the city was to face a lawsuit, TML insurance coverage, uh, requires $20,000 insurance payment, so that would cover that if that was to happen. Um, it also allows us to allocate some funds that at the end of the year, hopefully can go straight into general fund reserve balance, so we contribute that way, if, if we don't need it.
Reserve balance and/or, yeah. Offsetting.
Yeah. You ain't taking my money.
I hear a little contention.
It's always fun, right, we'll get there.
Let's cut him off.
We'll get there. Um, okay, let's talk about professional services on here, so professional services, we budgeted 135,000 this year, we've spent already 152,000 of that, that is primarily due to Bureau Veritas, that's our third-party review company, so, um, that's a pass-through essentially, so we collect revenue on permits that come in, we pay Bureau Veritas to review those permits and conduct inspections. Um, so although we're over budget here, we're also gonna have a, a significant increase in revenue to offset that as well. The 202 homes are nearly complete, prior year expenditure with Bureau Veritas was 67,000, I believe is what it was, and that was still with some homes and developments coming in, so I don't anticipate us to go that high with Bureau Veritas at all this next year. I think it'll probably be around the 20,000 mark, would be the, uh, next year for permit review and processing and inspections. But the reason why I'm asking for an increase to 150,000 is there are some engineering reviews and things that are required that hit my budget. Also, we talked about council wanting to conduct the study and assessment for stormwater utility. And so I think this is kinda where we need to decide if we wanna proceed forward with the stormwater utilities study, that study's gonna cost 68,000 dollars, and that will come out of this budget. If council wishes to move forward with that study, then I would recommend we leave it at 150,000. If council doesn't want to look at doing the stormwater utility, then we can eliminate, reduce that budget back. So I don't know if that's something, you as council wanna decide if there's pros and cons to it. Um, we can do the study, that doesn't mean we have to implement the, the fee, you can choose not to implement the fee, but at that point, we also would be wasting 68,000.
Yeah, you have to pretty much know that you interest the day, it's, it's an investment.
Yeah. Um, back up to the library?
Yes ma'am.
The 20,000.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, do we have any kind of feedback from the library itself on how everyone is doing using their library?
I don't have any stats, but I can pull some, I will, I will ask, it's great to work with, I know that we've been working really well with NY, um, using our facility, they've used our Civic Center a few times, they're using it right now, every Monday night, they're gonna be adding our Civic Center. Yes ma'am, so we're, we're, we're trying to have a very good partnership with them, they've been great to work with, uh, so it'll be easy for me to get some stats and information and share it right. And, remember, did you wanna, did you wanna discuss professional services, and what do you wanna use at 68,000?
I just wanted to back to that while I'm thinking it.
Okay.
No, uh, I think the 150, this is just my thinking out loud, let's, I suggest we leave it there, because of all the things you just said. It's stormwater.
I mean, cause even if, even if we, even if we do allocate it, and for whatever reason, four or five months down the road, and we decide that we're not gonna do the study, but that's okay, we just have extra funds in there, just for cushion for whatever else, but. And then in the end, if we don't, we can dump it in, change general reserve. Have reserve, yeah.
The, um, with the stormwater utility study, one thing that we can discuss, and I'm just putting it out here now, so you can help provide me when we get to that, um, is that I know trash collection has been a topic, we can always look to adjust our trash collection contract, and go back to negotiations with them to see if maybe there's some options for savings. Maybe going from two pickups a week down to one, or, or whatever, whatever options, we can talk to them about maybe trying to offset a stormwater utility fee on the water bill through renegotiation of our trash, our trash collection contract.
I've got a niece who lives in, excuse me, I've got a niece who lives in Cleveland, and she says they do, um, trash pickup, they want to, you know, Cleveland, it's huge compared to us, and it seems to be working, they're, everybody's happy with it. Yeah, and so I thought that would be.
Actually, take them staying on the schedule.
Well, then on the roads, those big trucks are not on the roads twice in a week. And that would be a cost savings that can move in the stormwater direction. Because we, we need to do that. So anyway, just when we get there, if something that could.
Okay, so council wants to leave this at a hundred and fifty thousand, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, perfect. All right, let's move on over to finance. Good timing on my part, from beginning of my highlight.
I'm marginalized, just wind it out, oh, oh, that's, oh.
Um, going down, one of the first things is computer programming. We for sure need to increase that, Susan needs to.
Save, save, save possibly.
And I really want to have a pretty, uh, hefty.
It tells me every day I don't have enough memory. I have to replace these. That's scary.
Yeah.
And it, it's, it's five years old, I gotta, I gotta study it, so. I mean, let's make sure we should give it a couple of years.
Yeah, and when can we get that? Do we have to wait till October?
Yeah, I'm gonna live along till October.
It is backed up, the data is backed up, so.
But it's moving slowly, and that.
That's time for.
It is, so we'll, we'll go back to that. It doesn't make me live in the back.
Minor equipment, she does that well, well. You can talk about your budget.
What do you got, girl? What kind of minor equipment do you need? A desk?
I heard that's.
A desk that's.
Yeah, two for office, you're saying.
Yeah, it's all covered.
Weird how she needs a two level thing.
Like a little way around the room. Well, and she's, she's, it's like her finance director for that. Yeah, it's, oh, yeah, I see how many this year will be. Oh, yeah, and she's sitting there like, ah, paper, C R P for the. How do you work like that?
Can I think it out?
No, you can't.
No, the touch was stuck.
So it's, yeah. So really need a hand? Yes, okay, yes. Uh, so, yeah, those, those are the, the major changes is increasing the computer to cover the computer. And, uh, the minor equipment, and, um. It, it shows that dues and memberships went up twenty-five percent, it's literally one hundred dollars more. It's not like it's a huge amount. And, and then of course, uh, further down on the page, the TIF contribution showing up a hundred and twenty-one percent, and that is offset by the revenue that we will receive for that, further down. Closer to the box. Yep. Hundred and twenty-one percent. Going up to two hundred and fifty-five.
Just starting with city, okay.
Yeah, city. Yeah, so this year, the contribution that, that the city made to the TIF line was a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And as those properties come in over here, they are all in the TIF zone, so that amount is also gonna go up. And this is actually probably a conservative number, probably could've gone higher, but, um, until we know a little bit more, then perhaps the next year it'll be much higher, but, um, with that, uh, so we deposited, yeah, a hundred and eighty-four thousand in, um, both the county and this, the, uh.
Hospital.
County and the hospital, um, were each around twenty-five to thirty thousand. Uh, so with that, the.
Our TIF balance is eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, five cents.
He figured y'all would wanna know how much is in there, so it's, so it's finally starting to accrue a little bit, um, so, yeah.
Did you read that already?
Yes, ma'am, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven, and five cents.
Oh, forget that nickel.
And so, since we're on the topic of TIF, just real quick, um, something to bear in mind is those funds are restricted funds. There is a TIF board that i- is established by ordinance. I don't believe there are any appointees to that board because these board has just sat stagnant because there hasn't.
Two of us anyway, are you on it?
Oh, okay. So we, we, we'd likely need to revisit that, but before any of those funds can be spent, two things to keep in mind. Those funds aren't levied for bond purposes, um, and they can only be spent for reinvestment either back in, within the TIF zone. Uh, they can be used for economic development purposes to something being developed within the TIF zone, uh, infrastructure, or any city facilities outside of the TIF zone. So those are kind of the uses of that, an overview of the uses for that fund. Um, one thing I'm not a fan of is that, that those are levied for bond purposes, they were levied for the twenty-twenty bond, so.
The twenty-twenty bond or the tax notes?
I think it was the bond, I think E D C was taxing.
Okay, I don't understand what you're saying. They were levied for the bond, what does that?
They were used as collateral.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now, not that amount, not that amount, no. But, but there is a good chunk, I think almost four hundred and fifty thousand of it was, was there at the time for collateral.
Just the amount that was in the fund at the time of the bond.
Okay, so about half of it is earmarked or?
It's, it's, it's free money, yeah.
Yeah. So, the bond thingy went away?
No, I'm sorry, y- yes, half is free, but the other half is.
Okay, it's restricted, it, it can't be used until the bond is paid off.
Right, okay. That's it. All right, what else you got there?
Tarrant County municipal district went up slightly, um, that's out of my hands.
It's likely due to the number of properties as well. We do have two hundred and two homes that are being assessed.
Uh, that's it.
Okay, I'm gonna ask.
Sure.
How much money do we have left in the office?
I can't tell you, I, I wasn't prepared to give you your final number today, but I will tell you it's approx, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand, I think is what was left that hasn't been finalized. Now, I say that because we've asked to leave that funding alone as we get to year end. Since we are allowed to use that funding for any legitimate, medusable purpose, I wanna make sure that we don't need to utilize that funding to balance our budget at the end of the year.
That's cool.
If we don't need any of the funds to balance our budget after October, then fifth figure twenty-five is the last year we have to spend those funds. So we will need to come back and make the final allocations.
Yeah, we'll do a budget amendment and put it to whatever.
Okay. But everything that we spent it on before now, I know that if there was a project going on, there's all kinds of engineering fees and tax title, license, work type fees, and so all of those sort of mishmash around, and it takes forever to get the final number. Are we done paying the final numbers on any other project?
I would say we are probably about ninety-eight percent done, there may be a little bit still hanging out.
There's something police-related that hasn't been invoiced yet, but.
Um, yeah, I should've, I should've brought my, I didn't break my heart, but I will, I will research that. Most projects, yeah, most projects are complete, and if they weren't, or they should be complete by the end of this year.
They told us about that.
Yeah.
Again.
Yeah, and, and then there's some, there's some overages on some projects, there's some underages on some projects, we'll have to go back and admit, um, before our filing with, with the treasury. But, uh, I mean, I think, I think we'll have probably about two hundred and fifty thousand of ours left. Uh, if we don't have to make any major adjustments or utilize those funds to offset any unforeseen expenses issue.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. You need to do two steps, you're good.
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead and get your resources.
Right, we see all these large numbers.
Don't explain myself.
Please, that's your thirty.
Okay, so I'm asking for an increase in computer program maitens, uh, possibly, yes, possibly maybe the computer, my memory, where do you have the computer working voice?
Okay, your computer is also probably about five years old. Okay. I'm speaking for the committee here, for the council. That's too old for anybody's computer to be work in any kind of rapid manner. You have to keep that, you know, keep saving, and one false step, and, yeah, I don't even wanna think about that. So, we need to work on getting those new computers.
And we're, we're trying to spread it out so we're, you know, so that we're all not wanting a new computer on the same year. We're kinda like, okay, this year, so it's over.
And one name, two names.
Yeah, you're right. But, we're trying to spread it out, but you can't, but.
Um, just a slight increase in dues and memberships, but it's just, um, memberships going up. Employeeships going up to, um, employee appreciation, I ask for an increase in there just because of the events that I do for employees, just like the vouchers I do yearly and anything like employee appreciation. And then, it looks like travel, training, schools, um, this is specifically for webinars, my conferences, hotel stay. This last year, I didn't, I didn't stay in a hotel, luckily it was nearby. But just a s- my increase, I'm asking for, um, for extra webinars that I'm gonna be.
That looks like thirty-three percent. I'm kidding.
It looks like, it's not a lot, I promise you, it's not. The percentage is just kind of less.
Um, and in professional services, so with, um, overturn rates in certain departments and, um, possible new, uh, employees that were, we should be, uh, hiring in the future, that will definitely go up, uh.
All, all drug testing goes through for, but it's. Yeah, she's sending off the drug testing.
Whether it's a new hire or random employee drug testing, but it's all, it can help that check out.
We have employees now.
But, that's about it, we're good. Any questions?
No, it's pretty good.
You're good, all right.
City secretary budget, Indy couldn't be here, she's on vacation. She scheduled a vacation before we scheduled this meeting, so. I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna ruin her vacation.
No.
The advertising award, uh, I'm sorry, advertising, marketing and publication, uh, we are asking to increase that a little bit primarily because of newsletters. That cost is a little higher than I think we originally anticipated it to be. That budget also covers any public notices requirements, um, for hearings, any of that sort of stuff, so.
Yeah, it was almost, it was fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars to send out the newsletter, so.
I saw, I saw two blank pages and had a coronary.
Oh. I don't know.
That's not how we send it, it's how they structure when they receive it. So all we do is we send it to them in a Word format, they take it, they put it in, so it's however they, they manipulate it, but. Uh, Edna can, Edna can talk with them and see if there's something better we can do about it, trying to keep the blank pages.
Even, even as they set it up, the blank pages, ask them to make the font larger or something, because two blank pages, that looks wasteful to begin with, and then it also looks like, what am I missing? What did he print? And so it's kind of disconcerting.
Black pages.
Yeah, number three. Okay, we should. Exactly, exactly, so, uh. But, nice job on it.
I seen Miss Edna using her pen, so she's making it up. Um, our work of banquets is down significantly again because we're moving it, so most of it to my budget. Still leaving a little bit in there, um, just in case. And also, we were previously with the Christmas event, we were hitting this line item. That's why you see last year, we spent twenty-four thousand dollars on that line item, that was Christmas. We get sponsorships and everything to set that, offset that. But we've created a public event line item.
Halfway down, you'll see a hundred percent out of this line item. Um, to keep it, to keep it separate from other things, so.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, we put ten thousand here, um, but the majority of the expense for the Christmas event is all donations, so that, that's, yeah, offset on the other side of that.
Okay, so we'll discuss the, the, the donations part when we talk about revenue.
Yes, well, no, no. Normally, we don't, we don't budget what, we don't, we don't budget anything.
No, we, they just can't spend more than what they bring in, so if they only get five thousand dollars in donations, that's all they get to spend.
But where does that show up in the budget thing?
In a budget amendment.
Yeah.
At the end of the year, when we say, okay, we raised this much money, we spent this much money, we'll bring it to you as an amendment. Because if we.
We call that money.
If we, donations.
Donations, yeah, yeah, it'll be under revenue, but it'll say donations, and then I use that to offset it on the budget.
Because if we were to try to budget a, an, an expenditure that's a donation, then we also have to try to equally budget that revenue. Otherwise, you're way over budgeting your expenditures and way under budgeting.
And I don't, I don't wanna count that because I know they're gonna get it, so.
Got you, okay, all right.
Um, computer program M and A, that's a, that's a significant increase that is primarily due to, uh, Laserfish. If you, if you remember, we implemented Laserfish through ARPA two years ago. Upfront implementation cost of seventy-one thousand, I'm sorry, seventy-five thousand was, uh, paid for with ARPA funds. First annual renewal was paid for with ARPA funds. This year, we're anticipating to pay down with it all, so.
Okay, and what exactly is Microfiche?
Uh, laser, it's Laserfish. Laserfish is our electronic scanning and records management software for the city.
Is that the name of it?
That is the name of it, Laserfish. Um, and it's F I S C H E, not like a fish. I was gonna try to make a fish mix. We're live, and I don't like, I don't want that to come back at the banquet, so I won't do that.
Making notes.
But, uh, so that's our records management system, that's where all of our ordinances, resolutions, contracts, agreements, uh, historical documents, minutes, everything gets scanned in electronically now, rather than put it to a file box and stored in a record room that leaks.
That's rooms. Are they also going to scan the old government times issues?
I don't know that we're equipped to scan that, but we are, we are, they have done a phenomenal job. The records staff that we brought over, the part of the library, they've done a phenomenal job scanning it.
Yes.
Every ordinance is now scanned in, every resolution is all scanned, all of our historicals.